I believe Amanda was sending you stuff too.
What was that?
She thinks Amanda was sending you stuff too.
I'll call the meeting board.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, you two.
He's not here, Jim.
What's that?
So he said, "Good morning."
Oh, good morning.
Okay, I would convene as a Walworth County finding zoning board. Is there any old business? New business?
Motion for a demand.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here and then roll call. Kevin?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion passed. I'd like to convene as a Walworth County Board of Zoning Adjustment. Is there any old business? New business?
There is none, motion for a demand.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here and then roll call. Kevin?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion passed. I'd like to convene as a Board of County Commissioners. Approval of the agenda. I guess I got one thing I'd like to add and talk a little bit about it. That's that fogger for disaffecting basically up in the courthouse. I got one from the school. Jim got that all set up. Is there anything else to add to the agenda?
Yes, Becky.
Discussion regarding September meeting dates.
Alrighty.
You want to bring up the handbook? And that also, or just bring that up in the normal business?
Old business.
Yes, Becky.
Did you want to add that other item?
Yeah, I'd like to add the contract with support circle.
Alrighty.
Then I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
So we're gonna add the fogger with the September dates and support circle. I got a motion on the floor to approve the agenda. Need a second.
Okay.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Did you guys out? Jim, did you hear what we were talking about too?
Just the foggers, all I got. I'm only getting about every other word.
Okay, we have the fogger, the September dates, and the support circle with the Jess Brockle.
Oh, okay.
Okay, any other discussion? Here and then roll call. Kevin?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion passed. Public form? There is no one? Okay, then we'll we'll go to number fourteen. Consider motion to approve county commission minutes for August fourth. Does anybody have a chance to go over them?
I'll move to approve.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
They got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here and then roll call. Kevin?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, then I need a motion for the August eleventh minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here and then roll call. Kevin?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion passed. Okay, number fifteen. Consider motion to approve claims to be paid as presented. Has everybody had a chance to go over them?
I have one thing on the claims. There's one medical from Family Pharmacy. Prescription for five hundred and three dollars and fifty-four cents. Has anybody looked at that bill to find out what that is, or is that our discount? Is that? If that's the case, it's no wonder why we have so many people in jail because they're going to jail to get their prescriptions filled.
Who's got that?
It is multiple, multiple prescriptions for one person.
I'll name your names.
How many prescriptions?
There's, I got it here. Claim for five oh three fifty-four is, looks like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen different prescriptions.
Yeah.
For one person.
For one person. Does it say how many days of pills are on that?
No.
That's usually at least a week, isn't it?
I think it's five days, isn't it?
I, I don't know. I
But I mean, why don't we just why do you think people are going to jail so they can get their prescriptions filled?
I doubt if that's the case.
Isn't it supposed to be like a five day deal?
Yeah.
Isn't that what it is, Jim? Five days, isn't it?
Yeah, it's five or days or a week or something, and I don't know just, you know, but they only get a week's supply at a time if they're gonna be there.
Most of them are twenty-eight hours.
We don't dare neglect their medications. We've done quite a lot of trouble already with past lawsuits because we they, they, we denied their meds.
Well, I guess you guys are gonna have to just check to make sure that that's what it is. If they're positive, that's what was the agreement, was five or, five or seven days.
But does that include our discount?
I would, I would assume, and Josh can't be there, and I don't think Chelsea's there probably, that Chelsea has checked that out and made sure that that's what our discount was going before, before they send the bill up.
There's two, two prescriptions on that same deal, the same, same code number and everything for fifty-four dollars and eighty-two cents.
There's so some of these were on these, these were all four different dates.
What the dates, I mean, how far in between are the dates?
July ninth, July sixteenth, July seventeenth, and July twenty-second.
So a week.
Sixteenth and seventeenth, twenty-second, so that's only one date apart there, and four days, five days apart there. I don't know, it just seems if you go down through the list here for Family Pharmacy, there's one, two, three, four, five, six. Got seven from Family Pharmacy. No wonder why we're having such an issue.
Well, the guys are just gonna have to talk with either Chelsea or any of them guys get back.
Okay. One of the, one of the deals that we said was for a twenty-eight day supply.
Mm-hmm. A couple of them.
So I don't think that's right.
No, it's not. As I said, neither one of them, nobody's here to answer questions, so we're gonna have to visit with them and get it figured out. It's not supposed to be. It was agreed on five or seven days, and that was it, so.
I would guess if they've got a prescription filled for twenty-seven days, I don't know, Doug is gonna be locked up for like a month or, or better. You know, some of them have to sit in jail for some time. So I would guess our staff got a prescription for twenty-eight days just because they're gonna be there longer than that.
Well, it's just gonna get checked out, I guess, when the guy get out, Josh and Justin, Chelsea.
My question is, who is, who is, is this coming from the doctor's office, these prescriptions, or where is this?
That's what I don't understand. Are any doctors checking this out, or are they just saying, well, this is, this is prescriptions I have, you need to get them filled? Is somebody checking them out?
Well, the pharmacy won't fill that prescription if, if they're not on that med, for one thing, and
Well, I understand.
I assume that's what our nurse is doing, when she, does she have to sign off on any meds our staff give anybody in there? So I assume that she's checking that out or making sure that they're, they need that medication.
What if, what if some of these are vitamins?
I would doubt that they're given prescription vitamins.
I think we need to check into it.
Just because it's from the Family Pharmacy, that means a prescription.
Well, my advice is
So we have to just do some checking on it?
Yeah. Okay, anything else on the claims?
I make a motion to approve.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any more discussion on that? Here and then roll call. Kevin?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Motion passed. Amanda?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you. Motion has a report.
Just pretty much gone, so Becky?
No, there's some changes. There's some manual entries that need to be done in the system for the health insurance issues we've been having with the way it's being done. It's not working out. And I contacted Connecting Point, and Doreen is supposed to be getting with me to go through and make all the changes, so right now it's not matching until we get those entries done.
It's not, it's not working out with the health insurance, is it? Not getting paid, or?
Well, so we started doing prepay.
Yeah.
And apparently, it's still not working out to where they're still trying to charge us fees. And I need to get Jesse over here so we can figure out something because it's, like I said, it's not working out. And then the way we're doing it, then we have to avoid the check that prints out from payroll. Well then, manual entries are gonna have to be done because the prepay ones aren't matching up with the ones that were printed from payroll. And when you have employees terminate and things like that, then the bill doesn't ever match up. It's just there's, there's a lot of entries that need to be made to fix it. It's not working out, so I'm hoping when Doreen and I go through it, get everything updated, that we can come up with a different way of doing this. There's, there's gotta be a better way. We can't be the only county that needs to prepay. So.
So Jesse says that we should be prepaid, or?
Well, we keep getting late fees, no matter what. It's I gotta, I need to get him over here so we can figure out. I don't know if we need to pay a month in advance just so we can be ahead of the game. I don't know what our solution is gonna be because we can't pay until you guys meet or payroll, you know, so we're still ending up with late fees.
Should we put him on our agenda so he can talk to us about it, why the problems that we're having, and say, we either figured this out, or we find somebody else, or?
We could.
I'll put him on our agenda for the next meeting, or?
He should be able to come in and get it sorted out in the office, shouldn't he?
Yeah.
He should be.
What would we know about?
Let's do that first, and then if we need to, we could bring him to a meeting.
He could tell us anything, and we'd have to believe it, because what the hell would we know?
But if that's a problem.
Yeah, it's been a huge issue, so.
This has been an ongoing thing for a number of months.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you guys should just get, get over it.
Maybe we'll rework it.
And then if it, if that's not working, then?
Yeah.
I guess I'll make a motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Okay, I got one on the floor. Need a second?
I'll second it.
Got a second. Any more discussion? Here and then roll call. Kevin?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Jim?
I didn't hear what the motion is. I can only hear about every other word you're saying, so I really don't have any idea what you're even talking about.
It was a treasurer's monthly report.
The what?
There was a, a problem, we're having a problem right now with the insurance company having late bills and stuff, so we're gonna have Jesse come over and try and work it out. So that's why the auditorium treasurer's report is not matching right now.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
So.
I don't get it.
Okay.
Motion passed.
So the next thing is discussion regarding record number five eight one eight. It's just an update. Nyla had started this one, and now we're on the final stages of it. A letter is being sent out today to the property owners. And we are planning on officially taking it on the twenty-fifth of this month, so next Tuesday is when it is. So so they should get this letter and then send for me that on the twenty-fifth. It's gonna be county property.
Okay.
So if you have any questions, I may be here right now. And then the last thing is this resolution. I did a little research called Couple Treasurers, and I got a little bit more insight on it. So what was going on is these bigger counties, and even smaller counties, but bigger counties are seeing a lot more of this mailing in from out-of-state residents and licensing their vehicles out. With these, if they don't have all their stuff at the initial time of mailing, it becomes a little bit more labor-intensive. Where there are a lot of more phone calls, a lot more emails, and things of that nature. You know, when I first started in this office, we had one, and it took Leah about a day and a, or a week and a half to actually process it all, between all the phone calls, and the mailing, the forms back and forth, making sure they were signed, and things like that. So I can see it now, actually, one of them being a process help. You can get a lot of time invested in these items. So what I did is I gave you all a copy of the law, what it actually reads. This law was passed at the state on July first. And what this is, is these counties that were doing it earlier before that were charged this twenty-five dollar admin fee kind of really, it wasn't really legal, because there wasn't anything anywhere stating that they could do this. So the state went ahead and made this a law. Said that if these individual counties wanted to start passing this resolution, then we at least have the option to do it if we wanted to do it and be on the legal side of everything. So what this is, is it gives us maybe a little bit more of an option. I'm not saying that we're gonna do this. If somebody mails their registration, or somebody mails a title, or if a dealer mails a title into us, and it's, you know, common sense, you know, free and clear, it's easy, we're not gonna charge them twenty-five dollars. Now, somebody, you know, sends something in, and they're missing two of the forms, and you have to start calling dealerships, and you have to start calling them, and doing all this mailing stuff, and it starts becoming kind of a lot of time investment, that's when this option comes into play. Where we can kind of just, the county can get compensated a little bit for the extra time involved in these. So it's not saying that we're gonna do it to every mailing. We get to use our discretion by passing this resolution. Campbell County, I talked to her directly. They passed this with pretty close to the same wording that I gave you for this new resolution. Just so that we have the option.
Okay. Consider motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty dash ten for the establishment of administration fee for the certain title and registration services. I would take a motion for that?
I guess I got a few more questions before I take a motion. So it's the title large boat, so what's defined as a large boat?
So this is where if it has more weight, it's determined by weight factor. It's determined by the power of the engine or the motor on it. So when you start classifying it into the title and registration, that's when it all factors in. I don't actually see a title. There's a, a one on there. Just like trailers, like small trailers and large trailers. You know, if it exceeds three thousand, they're gonna now be into a large trailer versus a small trailer. So it's the same kind of variable, just like large, larger vehicles.
So you know what the weight limit is?
I do not know.
Or horsepower is?
No, I don't have it.
Right. A lot of the ones driving around now with three hundreds or three fifties, is that a large boat?
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me. I don't know, I haven't, I haven't actually looked into that one. That's still one of the things that I'm processing and trying to figure out as we go. We haven't had one yet, so I really haven't brought it up, I guess, in my learning.
Another question I would have. Who makes a determination whether we're gonna charge for it or not? Is that you?
It'll be our office, you know, and it'll become down to my decision. It's up to you guys how much we do charge, and it should not exceed the twenty-five dollars. So if you guys want to put a twelve dollar, or a ten dollar, or whatever, that's what we'll charge. But if I see that Leah or Ruth are having a time, just like that one, when we have a week and a half involved in it, and the, the stress that came with it that I've seen, I mean, it's gonna be a pretty clear indicator on the ones that we need to charge the woman who don't. It's gonna kind of come down to common sense of like, okay, this took us a lot, a lot more time than normal one. So we can determine that in our office, too. I can talk to the deputies and see if, you know, something takes more than two days, more than three days. Is that what will be our determining factor on when we charge this fee? Up in Campbell County, they passed this, I believe, right away in July, and she said that they have yet to do it, that people are usually generally pretty good. And like Leah said, we maybe do these where they're really time-intensive, maybe, I think, ten times a year. So it's not something that we're gonna see.
Is this just for out-of-county people, or?
No, this is, this is, in the, in the resolution, it does say out-of-state in residents of the county. But that's where we can kind of use our discretion. You know, if we have somebody that's a resident of Walworth County, I would really choose not to charge them the twenty-five dollar fee because they live here, and it's gonna be pretty easy, and I don't think we'd ever get into that. Because people are really pretty good on some of the things that we have had questions on. They're pretty good about just coming in, or we can call them, and they do the legwork for us. But it's these ones that we're kind of focusing on more, on the out-of-state where we do have, you know, hundreds of miles between us. It is all mail, it is all email or fax. And so you just, you don't have that capability to have that in-person contact like you do with the residents. So I'm gonna say that it's gonna need more towards these out-of-state forms than there will be in Walworth County.
Well, is someone gonna make a motion, or are you gonna wait till she knows a little more about it? Or they take a motion for it?
I don't think I'm gonna, I would be bringing more to the table. Like I said, this is exactly what I'm getting. I'm calling other treasurers, and they're just saying, we just passed it, so we're covered, so we have the option. It, it pretty much says it right there, what it is.
I guess the only thing I see with the thing is that, I mean, it allows you to do the charge for a mailing, and I guess I'm not sure who's at fault when the stuff isn't lined up. Is it the person that is trying to license the vehicle, or is it the dealership that's selling the vehicle that doesn't have the stuff in order?
When it comes down to like the dealerships, most of the time, I have yet to run into where they haven't had their stuff all together. A lot of times it comes down to, or if the dealership mails it directly to the person, which they normally do, and they will grab certain pieces out of the envelope and either mail it or bring it over, and they don't have all of it. And so we encourage people when they have to get that stuff, just bring the whole packet. And so that's why residents, it's not gonna be that big of a deal, I don't think, with them, just because when they come up to our office and we say, oh, we need this paperwork to show what you actually purchased for, like, oh, yeah, it's back in our envelope. Okay, come back. So then we're not dealing with that. If it comes to it where they mail it to us, then we'll just put it back on our file. We'll hold it until we can get the rest of that month, because we're not, you know, calling around. If we call the people and say, hey, we didn't get this piece of paper, can you get it to us? Yep, and they mail it to us, well, that wasn't a ton of work. So obviously, that wouldn't be a feat. It sees that we had one, and he didn't have a bill of sale, and he finally got one, and he sent it to us, but then the bill of sale wasn't signed. So then we had to send the bill of sale back. He signed that, we got it back, and it ended up that the dates didn't match what was on the title, so then we had to send everything back. You know, and so all of a sudden, all these signatures and all this mailing back and forth, it just got to be, that, that's just a little bit of a scenario. On what it just becomes, a lot of, it's always sitting on your desk. You think you might have it buttoned up, and then you tell them what they owe, then they send a check that is five dollars to light, and then you have to send the check back to them, and then you have to wait for the check to come. Well, then it goes, crosses over into another month, so now the fee's changed. So now you have to go through all the big work that you just sent them, that you had to sign, because now the numbers change. And some of them are signed, and some of them aren't. So, I mean, that's just the scenario that had just happened, where you didn't into that. So my understanding of this is that it's a law that was passed by the state. All the other treasurers are kind of telling me that it's a, it's a required thing that the state is making counties do. It's a pass a resolution so that the counties are covered. So.
How do, how do the people, are they gonna know whether they're gonna get charged or not?
When we get to that point, we will, you know, if it's, if we determine that three days is kind of the cutoff, we'll notify them. You know, this is the last time of You know, this is the last time of, we can notify them with a letter or a call that this is the last time. If this continues on, that'll be an additional $25 admin fee. We can let them know ahead of time and warn them that it's starting to become too extensive too. We can work that out in the office if you want us to kind of give them a little heads up. And we're hoping that by the whole state adopting this, that people from out-of-state or people that are choosing to mail in their stuff, it kind of makes the attention a little bit more and get it right the first time, so that we don't have as much time involved in these, to try to cut those mistakes a little bit.
I guess the only, the only thing that I see, the unfortunate part that I see in the whole thing is individuals that would be trying to do something like this, for the individual to know exactly what forms and stuff that need to be sent in for different things, I wouldn't know what forms need to be sent.
Well, that's when they contact our office. A lot of them, if they don't know, they'll contact our office. And we'll tell them exactly what they need and how they need to get it, where they can get it. And then they're always usually pretty good about going on. It's just that every once in a while, you have somebody who either chooses not to, you know, write them down, and then they forget one, or they get in a hurry, and that's when we would say, okay, we're missing this form. And if we can contact them and we get it right away, and we don't have to go and trail after them and call them daily about needing this thing, so we can process their item, you know, there's not going to be the fee. If we can just call them up and say, hey, you're still missing your 608, and we need that, and they can turn around and get it for us off of one phone call, then we're not going to charge it for them. But if we have to call every day saying that we need to get this processed, and it starts becoming a little bit of a burden, then that's when we start looking at that.
I guess the other, the other thing that concerns me about it a little bit is since the COVID thing that we've been battling with, we've been trying to tell people to mail their stuff in all the time instead of come to the courthouse.
Yeah, I don't do that.
So now we're, now we're running into the whole thing where we're going to charge you a fee for mailing it.
Yeah.
And running this stuff, and I think we're just, I think we're personally opening ourselves up to nothing but a headache of somebody that's going to be screaming bloody murder because they got charged a $25 fee over somebody that didn't get it. And maybe it's because they were reckless in what they were doing. But if it's coming from a dealership and it's, I can understand if it's coming from a dealership, and then you nail the dealership for not having the paperwork right. But I don't see how you, I mean, to me, it's just a, we're opening up a campfire as far as I'm concerned.
Well, not only that, but are we setting precedents that the government offices are going to start charging for everything we do? If I want to get something registered for the registered date, so I forget a piece of paper, and have to go back, am I going to get charged for that? Or if I'm trying to get a building permit and I forget something, maybe I go back, is that an extra charge?
Yeah, I, I guess I see both sides of it. I see what she's, you know, having trouble with some of them, but.
I understand.
I just, I find it, I find it hard to believe that we're going to put a law on the books or a resolution on the books that is going to handle four to five situations or 10 situations a year.
Yeah, it is, it is very small cars, and this does come from a push from bigger counties. And the state just recognized that, that they wanted the state to be uniform all around, that if you want to have the option to do these fees and to make up for the time that you're putting into it. So they passed this law so that it could be adapted by each individual county to have the option to do this. And, and from my research, it sounds like most of the counties are doing it, but.
I, I can understand that, but we don't have the population of many either. So, you know, 5,500 people here compared to 200,000. So I guess to put a resolution on there that we might or might not use, and it's up to the discretion of somebody you or your office, whether we're going to do it or not. I'm just worried that we're setting a precedence that now all of a sudden, everybody else's office is going to say, well, we should be charging for this.
And if they can get it passed with the state, I mean, that's, this is coming from the state, so it's not just all individual counties just deciding to do this, so, but.
What's your thought on that?
I see it both ways. I can see where it's, it's a pain if it's taking them so long to do it.
Well, I understand.
But I, but I can see where, where people have a tendency not to bring what they're supposed to, and they probably know what they're supposed to bring. So.
But then that's only hurting them because they're not getting what they need done in time.
Well, it's up to us, so. I'll ask one more time for a motion. For the resolution of 2020-10.
Jim, in case you didn't hear, it's the last call for a resolution for this resolution, 2020-10. Nobody, nobody's made a motion yet?
Yeah.
Then I will say motion failed. Next, Commander.
You all have my report? I did receive phone checks yesterday in the mail, but I didn't have time to process them. By the time I needed to print the reports, so a lot of these smaller amounts will go away, are paid up. Any questions?
Good job.
What's that?
Is there any questions on the report?
Oh, I didn't, I didn't get to see it, so.
Get the motion.
Okay, we'll go to number 18. Consider most to change the polling place for district or precinct three to the Selby Opera House.
So at the primary election, Friday, Friday before the election, the Senior Citizen Center in Selby said we could not use the location for the election. We, as you know, got trailers outside, and we didn't have time to actually physically change the location, because we would have had to contact every voter, and there wasn't time. So I talked to the city of Selby and asked if it would be an issue if we just changed our location to the Opera House. And they, she said that it would be no problem. Just to avoid any problems with the coronavirus and everything else, I think that would be a very good idea.
Are you guys hearing that, Davis and Jim?
Yes.
Want to change precinct three from Senior Citizen Center to the Opera House.
Oh, yeah, that sounds like a good idea.
I'll make a motion to do that.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'm taking it.
Got a second? Any more discussion on that? Hear none. We'll call Kevin.
Yes.
Marion.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Scott, yes. Motion passed. Okay, go to number 19. Consider most to approve signed contract with DOH for the county health nurse. And she's getting that anyway.
Normally Renee would come in and explain some of the things the county health nurse does and things, but because of COVID, that's not going to happen. I received an email from the Department of Health. They want these documents now, so it's signed on the computer. So I would need a motion for you guys to approve me signing it. It's our regular contract. They did request, when I talked to Renee, a 2% increase, but you guys decided at budget time that would not happen. So the amount is the same as this year, which is $37,742. This, of course, contract is for next year, so I would need a motion for you guys to approve me signing this.
I would take a motion for that. Do they have Becky signed?
So moved.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor. I need a second.
I'll second it.
Okay, you got a second. Any more discussion on that?
This is the county health nurse, Jim.
Oh, okay.
Law changed from last year, same price.
Okay, that's good.
They asked for a 2% increase. We're just going to keep that to using last year's price.
Yeah, I, I'm agreeing, fully agree.
Who vote, we'll call Kevin.
Yes.
Marion.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Motion passed. Gary.
Gary, it's somebody, so he can hear what you're saying. Jim, you're, you're here for some reason.
I'm going to start off today with a public apology. I had a potty mouth. Last time I talked to you guys, it was a really bad day. Ever get in a situation where you just let it go? That was the day. I'll hand out the budget balance report, and I'll get out of here and make it simple. With our conversation on the Tuesday last week, I want to work with the highway department commissioners to kind of keep a line on where we're at. I did about a five or 10-minute budget projection. It's going to be close, and that's if we don't crush gravel. If there's any money available by the end of the year, consolidated, we will make a decision what's more important, crush gravel or preserve money for another greater next year. That's where the highway department commissioners will be involved, so.
And when do you want to hit together?
I'm always busy.
I know.
But, uh, uh, what can you get done today? Today work for you guys?
Not really good for me. Today would be a.
Come on up, Friday.
Probably would work better for me.
What asset timing will just make it work?
Down on location, year, Tuesday, you guys let me.
I would think right away in the morning, that would work better.
Do your best.
Okay.
Doesn't matter whoever.
I'll try to figure that out.
Okay.
Any questions?
I guess I don't have any.
Since this is a July report, the August report's when the biggest thing that's going to start coming in. I.e. the asphalt mixed material we got. We got some, some coal mixed material. The volumes weren't very high at all for doing puddles. When we start chip sealing, intendedly, we're looking at, at 12 miles of chip sealing. We were kind of looking at the end of August, but we're kind of holding it back a little bit. Probably the first week in September, so.
They're going to use our chips then?
They're going to use our chips. They're going to, we're going to provide the oil off of our joint power agreement we closed with McRusson County, and all they're doing is putting it on the ground. There's kind of a gray area historically. The highway department would always screen it before it went on the trucks. Hopefully, it can go through their machine. A gray area would be if there's any blocky stuff that occurs, then we have to put a shake and screen there and shake it out. And this is a high-speed operation.
You have questions, or are we going to provide product, so?
In our reality, it's going to go through then.
I asked the contractor, I informed the contractor, I would provide a truckload of material. They come get it, they take it to their chip cutter machine, throw it in there and see if there's any, any issues that occur by it. I personally think it's going to go through, and so did they, so.
Yeah, it makes things a lot easier.
I've given a lot of thought, and believe me, if you haven't realized it, I hate surprises. Absolutely hate surprises, so.
Any questions? Anybody got anything for Gary?
No.
I just got one quick. Where you do the puddles, is that where the areas you're going to plan on doing chip sealing over the top of that?
No.
No, okay.
Uh, yes and no. I'm looking at Sitka Road, north to south. I'm looking at a mile north of Acosta and a half a mile south. I'm looking at Riverview Road to the development. And I'm looking at two miles, what is it from the cemetery was, three miles, a mile south, four, seven miles Cemetery Road where we did blade patching. When I laid it out, there's, there's about two miles of that seven miles that was blade patched. So there's going to be segments of chip sealing on that to cover up our blade patch stuff to preserve it, so.
When you do that over some of the puddles, I was just questioning, curious, do you go back before you do a chip seal on those puddles to make sure that they're filled good? Or is that just, right now, you kind of just go with it and?
It's an individualized thing, Marion, like, some of the roads are in such bad shape that, and especially if you have a contractor coming in, it gets blow and go. Lay it out, organize it, plant it, get in and get out. I'm not saying that areas that were puddle patched probably should be chip sealed, but that means a lot of extra mobilization, and so, kind of respond to your question that ultimately you would want to chip seal. But we're, we're going to be chip sealing North Sitka Road that, in my mind, is about 70% fixed. But when you analyze the condition of the road surface and with the expenditure. But, when you analyze the condition of the road surface, and with the expenditures you put into it to preserve the integrity of the surface. Uh, you're, you're not just chip sealing the blade patches, you're preserving the stuff that wasn't damaged yet. You understand what I'm saying? So, uh, and that's where we're behind the eight ball, that, uh, if we had an entirely good highway system. Uh, the chip seal would come in, it's a preservative action, but when we're as bad as we are, it's basically do what you can with the money you have and...
I was just, I was just curious because down, we've been working at, whoever's down there, and see just patched all of those puddles, and for the most part they're good, but there's a couple of them there that... I don't know, a couple days later, whatever, there was rain, and there was one of the puddles that actually still had water sitting in it.
And some of our blade patches are holding a little bit.
So, I didn't know if that's something that a guy tried to fill, fill a little bit more before you chip seal it out.
Like I said, uh, you, you can get some, with, with the chip sealing action, you've got this wake of oil that sprayed out. Uh, there's actually a wake under the spray bar that, that, uh, and when the, the cover area come, that, that also leaks.
Okay.
Uh, until you get it back in, so if there's a hole, the, the oil will accumulate into the depression, and, uh... It, it will make improvements, but I'm not saying that you won't see them again after that, but, uh...
It helps.
I just, I just, that was the only question I had, was I, I saw one or two of those spots that were still holding a little bit of water, like it, it actually pushed in a little more than, you know?
Would you buy Jason's, or would you put gravel in there first before you chip seal it, or...
Buy Jason's, uh, and, uh, that's gonna be, uh, a gravel in roll. And it will lay there until I or we determine that we have the money to mill it this year or next year. Uh, and that's one of the factors, that if there's, we take a look around, uh, at least by the end of September. Uh, more like early October, that, uh, if there's revenues left, with the intent that we're not gonna break the bank, try and stay within that one point eight million. Uh, if there's money left, you've got, do you preserve the couch for a greater purpose, uh, purchase? Uh, do you cross gravel, uh, do you bring contractors in to mill these segments? Uh, we're gonna utilize every dollar available in the budget, and...
Are you gonna chip seal over that right way it is right now?
No, no, uh, the gravel part, the wet water road?
No. Hey, Jesus.
The gravel will go on first, uh, and then the milling machine will come in and predetermined depth of what kind of gravel material is in the base.
Won't be part of the chip sealing.
No, that's gonna be sectioned out for chip sealing this year. Uh, when we get to that red flag in the north end, the chip sealing stops, and we get, and it gets a road breakup ahead sign in the south, uh, that's where the chip sealing starts again and goes on.
I can't feel any impulse in.
I wanna get gravel on them as, as soon as possible, but, uh, uh, no gravel in Glum yet, and, uh, no gravel... We're in trouble, but, and basically, what I'm hearing, no base course on the contractor side, so. And that's what the engineers are saying, that, uh, when we milled the Sitka Road last time, we used, uh, we used culling material, gravel surfacing. It's got a different specification than base course. Uh, it, uh, in reality, I'm, I'm thinking fifteen years of, uh, performance out of that construction project. And, uh, in hindsight, we're not gonna be using any kind of gravel surfacing material to strengthen bases, it's gonna be select base course material that's clean. And I'll give a better base, but, uh...
All right, yeah, guys, have any questions for Gary? Thanks, Gary.
Thank you.
You all ready?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we're gonna go to the first one that we added to the agenda, this, this fogger, Becky.
Can we do that motion to approve the wage of this employee, so we can pay them?
Okay, we'll go to twenty-one, the sheriff, sheriff motion report, we don't have that. I need a motion to hire Josh Zwaiver, part-time correction officer at sixteen eighteen per hour and part-time.
Deputy sheriff.
Deputy sheriff.
For nineteen thirty-three, Ellen.
Nineteen thirty-three, you guys get all that?
Yeah. I totally...
Okay, I got a motion on the...
Move that away.
Okay, I got a motion on the floor, I need a second.
I'll second it.
Got a second, any more discussion on that? Hear none, we'll call Kevin.
Yes.
Marion.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Jim.
Yes.
Scott, yes, motion passed. What is going on? Holy smokes.
Too, too, nice, too close to hear it, so, then we'll feed that.
Okay, then we'll go back left to fogger, Becky, did you get it in your...
I didn't have time, I can go look right now, if you guys wanna discuss other things. Um, you have the contract with support circle, if you wanna discuss that now, I can go do some research.
Okay, we wanted, Kevin put on the agenda to talk about Jess Brockle's support circle.
I know we had talked about, uh, about her contract and stuff, but we never did decide one way or another, so... She's trying to figure out what she's planning on doing for the following year, so... What are we gonna do?
I would just relieve it as is, we, we paid her, we didn't have to negotiate it, that's her, that's her, what she charges, and just pay her, uh... Her visit, as we have been doing. And, and we think the way, I don't think we need to give any money in Northeast Mental Health, and just use that money to pay her.
So what about all the other stuff that she was planning on doing, just, uh, don't worry about anything else that she's doing?
Well, evidently, what she's doing, she is, she was satisfied with what she was charging, the two and quarter a visit. That covered all her paperwork and everything before evidently. Uh, her price is not negotiated or anything, that's what she charges, so I, I would say, pay her what she charges for each visit and... And use her as needed, as we have been doing.
Okay, so if she's not gonna be on call then, uh, all the time, and, uh, north, we're not using Northeast Mental Health. Uh, then what are we gonna do every time they get somebody, they have to go to Yankton or Aberdeen to get an evaluation?
That's a little different deal when they go there, I wish Josh was there to, to explain that, but, uh, she hasn't been on call so far, we've been getting by good. Uh, what was it, twenty-six or seven, she had the first half of the year, so if she does sixty a year, that's a little over thirteen thousand. Uh, I don't think we can afford to give her another ten or twelve thousand dollars. Uh, I don't think we have the money frankly to, to do that.
She's gonna provide, uh, pay as much service as we just, uh, authorized for the county health nurse. That was thirty-seven thousand, she's asking for twenty-five.
Yeah, I don't think we need to, to add it, we're, we're, we're doing fine the way we are. Josh and, and his staff is, doesn't have any complaint, the way things are working now.
Well, then she'll probably just pull out and not do any of them, she can, she can...
Well, it is her, it's her option to, to raise her price, uh, they did not negotiate that, that's just the price she charges, so that... It's her option to charge whatever she wants, and, uh, if, if Josh and his crew think this was a reason, they will use her, if not, they might try to do something else, I don't know what else.
Well, that's...
I wish they could be there to, to explain it a little more, how, how they use it, if, if there's any questions, or how they use her, if there's any questions or...
That's where we're at, if she's trying to renegotiate what she's getting paid, and she's gonna throw in a lot more services. So she's trying to figure out what her plan is for the coming year.
I don't, I don't, we need any more services, we're getting, we're getting by, I'm finding the way it's working right now.
Hey, what if she...
They bother when they need her.
What if she pulls out and says, if you don't do it, then, uh, I won't do any of it?
Then we'll, then they'll find somebody else to do it.
Okay, good luck.
Well, I don't know how we can do anything without Josh here, we need their opinion on it.
Oh, I understand, but... We paid Northeast Mental Health fifteen-five for how many years and never used them once.
Right, I think that was a waste of money, we don't know, I didn't know that they were not providing services for us anymore. They used to come to our, to our meeting and tell us what they were gonna do for us, and this and that, and I did not know we weren't using them, so...
I guess I didn't either, until Jess told me that she was doing all of them, and this is what she wanted to continue. And she'll give us a lot more than what she's just doing, bas, basics now.
Uh, and, and we're getting by some time that way. I don't think we need anymore, if, if, if they need more counseling, then Josh's staff can call her and, uh, pay her the fee that she charges.
So just the counseling, it's pay, all the paperwork that goes along with it.
And evidently, she figured before this, that that fee she was charging covered her paperwork time too and stuff. That's the fee she decided, and I got nothing to get at, Jeff, that's the fee she decided to charge. We didn't tell her if that's what we were gonna pay or anything, that's what she decided to charge, so that's just, it, in my mind, that should cover all the expenses. That she figures she incurs, and time and everything, while she is on that case.
So I guess Josh should've told us if they weren't, if he wasn't getting any service out of them, yeah, wouldn't know how we would know.
We wouldn't know, so...
Yeah, that's what I feel, is Jo, Josh dropped the ball there, if north, we weren't using Northeast, I mean, we should've been dropping them ten years ago.
Well, yeah, whatever it was, I mean, it's...
If they're not, not being used at all.
And it sounds like it's been two or three years since we had anything to do with them, so it isn't ten years, but granted, when, when, uh... We weren't getting any service from them, we shouldn't have been paying them.
Yeah, I mean, that's where, that's where I think Josh kinda dropped the ball in that deal, not letting us know that they weren't using them.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know, I can't speak for Josh on, on that part of it, but... I did talk to him about Jess's deal, and, uh, everything's keeping, working there, happy with things, the way things are right now, everything's working fine, so I really don't know why we wanna spend that much more money.
I think something's gotta be discussed, if Josh is here, we can wait until Josh gets here, but...
She's trying to figure out what she's gonna do for next year, and so if she, if we upset her, and she pulls out, I guess we'll worry about it later.
I guess, I guess there's not very much that I can do about her.
We're actually saving money by, by, uh, having a contract with her, to be paying Northeast fifteen-five, and she's getting fifteen-five, so...
We already said we're not gonna pay them fifteen, no, fifteen-five.
No, what you're saying, what we paid last year, we paid almost thirty thousand, thirty-one thousand, and if we did a contract with her for twenty-five, we'd still be saving six, seven thousand dollars a year.
Everybody's happy, and we don't have anything to worry about, but...
Yeah, but, and the same thing there is that, if Josh could've told us that we weren't getting any service from them, we would, we would spend fifteen thousand.
I understand that, just like we're supposed to get ninety-five dollars a day for US Marshals.
Well, that wasn't, they don't negotiate it, right, we don't need to talk about US Marshals, we're talking about Josh.
We're talking about money here, and that's what we're discussing, is whether it's worth it or not.
Well, I think we gotta talk about this when Josh is here.
Okay.
Okay, Becky. Jim, I went and got that fogger, and I flogged downstairs, uh, they showed me how to use it, and then they kinda gave it... Gave us, uh, address where they get them, they're out of North Dakota, pretty simple to use.
So, I just checked with the school, and they purchased them from Pro Dyes in Zilla, North Dakota, um, two hundred dollars each. And then they bought two hundred tablets to use in them for two hundred and fifty dollars. They purchased four for the school, um, I did find it on Amazon, but the only one I found was like three hundred and ninety dollars, so... It looks like this is definitely a cheaper option, I have the contact information, if you guys would like, I can order some.
I don't know much about them, do we just need one, or is it, or...
Well, don't you, I kinda think there should, one should be the, at the jail, and one in the courthouse.
Yeah.
Two houses.
You would look at it, Josh, you know more about it than I do, I didn't know what, what they told me about it, but... That's the two hundred or two hundred and fifty dollars, that is pretty cheap insurance, and it does what they told me it does.
I, I think all you need, one in the courthouse, I mean, holy smokes, I mean, you can, you can do all the rooms in a pretty short period of time.
Well, and only one person will probably be running it anyways, which is the custodian, in the courthouse.
Yeah, like I said, it's, they're very easy to run, they're light, they're, stuff tastes terrible though.
You're not supposed to flog yourself.
Well... Trial and error.
Did you get a top of the mask on when you flogged him?
No.
So if you like, I can contact the guy who ordered...
I really think the guy should be, should like, should have a couple of them.
Was it guaranteed to kill?
Well, we're using them everywhere, the schools are all using them, uh, they're supposed to, with the COVID, is what it is.
Yeah, any, it's just...
As I understand it, it's supposed to cure, kill all viruses and bacteria, from what they told me, and then the students can return to their classroom in just a few minutes after it's done. So, you know, there isn't any lingering chemical residue in the air, or, or something that's gonna bother people, from what they tell me.
They're, they're using it in airports and everything, airplanes and everything now.
And that's probably why, the only place I could find them was on Amazon, they were three hundred and ninety-five dollars, because somebody's selling over way more than normal, because you can't find them.
Like I said, the school, they're gonna do it, I think they're, would let kids go off for recess, I think they're gonna probably flog the room, I think... The teachers probably end up, if the janitor can't do it at the time, like I said, they're, they're just, that's simple to run.
Yeah, if we need a motion, I would make a motion to get two of them, one for the courthouse and one for the jail.
Yeah, we don't need, we don't need no motion for that, so...
We don't?
No.
Okay.
So order two of them, should I order two, two hundred packs, or just one two hundred pack of, uh, tablets?
I gotta order one pack.
Then we're gonna be carrying it back and forth.
Oh, yeah, for the other one you got.
Right, one, are you building, okay, I will do that.
All right, then we gotta set the dates in September.
Holding the meetings on the first doesn't work very well, because we don't have the bills and things like that. The fifteenth, we will be at Sioux Falls for the conference, so, and the twenty-second, I will not be here, Scott will not be here. The first meeting, we would like to be the eighth, so we'll actually have the bills and... and things by then.
Second could cause a problem the day after Labor Day.
There went my plan.
Labor Day is the seventh.
Right, so then it would be...
We do it tenth?
The tenth. Yeah, is normally when we would have it if we're gonna move it for holiday. Which works fine, we can do the tenth and the twenty-fourth if you guys wanted for our
It's fine, I mean, I still won't be here, but that's fine.
Well...
I'll be in Rochester all week.
So do you wanna move our last meeting to the twenty-ninth?
I don't, I don't care, it's just me, I mean, you guys are all gonna be there, I mean...
What date is that, Scott?
The twenty-fourth. Rebecca was just looking at different dates of September. I got, the whole week from the twenty-first to the, to the twenty-fifth, I'll, I'll be in Rochester, so...
Okay, now that works for me, I'm gonna be gone the week of the seventh. Uh, I'll be gone on two DM Thursday, that, that week, but... And I probably won't be able to be on the phone then either. Could we go like on the third, would that be possible, on, on the first Thursday instead of the first Tuesday?
That's what I was gonna say, if we did the third, they'd get you enough time for bills and stuff, but...
Yeah, that would be another time, that's what I was thinking about. And then when will we have our final?
Have the, have the first one on the third then, you guys think?
Well, that would sure work for me, but I don't believe in personal.
Should we go the third, get that one?
That's fine, I mean...
Okay, we'll do September the third for the first one? It, it's totally up to you guys, I mean, it's, I mean, I, I cannot be there that week, I'll be, like I said, I'll be at, at Mayo the whole week. I, I might, might be able to be on the phone, but...
Twenty-two, seventeen, then for the second one?
Well, we could, we're gonna be getting back from Sioux Falls and... On the fifteenth or sixteenth.
Oh, you did the twenty-ninth, huh?
And also, we wanna allow for plenty of time for you guys to figure out the highway budget.
So should we go the twenty-ninth?
Twenty-ninth or Tuesday, that's fine.
Twenty-ninth will be fine.
How about the twenty-ninth for the final one there for getting the budget and everything done, would that work for you guys?
That'd work for me, yeah.
Davis?
Yep, I think it'll be okay.
The only issue I see there is we might run into some deadlines for bills being due in between there, but you guys can authorize us to pay normal bills if you want to do it that way. We can have that as a motion on the next meeting to pay once that...
Right, let's just do that, let's do that next meeting then. Okay, let's do that then the third or twenty-ninth.
Okay.
All right? All right, we'll go to old business. I'd like to bring up policy, playbook, all the changes that we need to get in there. When would be a good time to meet with department heads and get all the dreams we have?
We're down a few at the moment.
Yeah. I would, I think we're gonna have to see how, how this whole thing plays out right now. See how many people could affect. See, right now, it's early stage, so we don't know what's gonna happen. Say we just see what happens and, uh, for the first, the next meeting, and then we can just put it on the agenda. Try to see if everything, everybody's gonna be here and have a meeting with the heads. It's about all that I can do. Any other old business? Yeah, I got a motion on the floor, to adjourn, I need a second?
I'll second.
Got a second? Any more discussion? Roll call, Kevin?
Yes.
Marion?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Scott, yes. Motion passed.
Thanks guys.